Grand County Commission meeting, uh, the next item on our agenda is confirming Grand County's position on TRT uh, uh, legislation. Um, and that is in reference to the, the survey that the UAC, the Utah Association of Counties has put out asking the county to, to submit one answer on, um, who wants to leave this discussion? And do we, so, so on this one, I, I started to get in, into the survey, but I didn't really continue going forward because I wasn't sure if that was the survey that we submit. Do you have a?
Um, yes, what I think, their letter wasn't clear, but what I, what I did is I just typed in test county or something like that. So the survey almost submitted.
Oh, you did, okay. You're way smarter than me, Kevin.
So I can see the questions.
Right, okay.
And it's, it actually is pretty short, so I think my initial suggestion.
Do you, is there, do you think it would be worth sharing the screen with the actual survey?
Um, I couldn't, or I could read it to you, it's very, very short.
Okay, great.
Okay.
You know, there's a preamble, but the places where you can say yes or no, there's two questions. One of them is our county supports additional flexibility for project dollars.
Project dollars, like for capital projects?
Yeah, that's where I think. I think what they need is.
Non-promotion.
Yeah, that's, okay, yeah, since, let's see, they're named for six, sixty-three percent, well, we call mitigation based on project dollars.
Okay.
So, so the first question is, yeah, so we've got the sixty-three percent that we, we spent on law enforcement, things like that. You know, a few years ago, they added grows as another principal expense in to recent, or additional options there. Uh, so I think the answer is yes, more options are always better.
Right.
But I, we have all the options.
For sure, that's small stakes for us, we, yeah.
Help us. And the next question reads, our county is disapparent, county supports additional flexibility for all TRT dollars, including promotion.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, that's it.
That's it, I, I, I.
You just want us to do a straw poll on each of those questions?
Um, it is an action item, I mean, we could, we could vote on it, right? That's right, right, Stephen?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Uh, okay. Motion?
Um, yeah, yeah, I, I think, I think make a motion, or, I mean, we could do a straw poll and just get it over that way.
I'll, I'll move that we submit yes answers to both questions.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. So Kevin, Kevin's put forth a motion to submit yes answers to flexibility questions on both the mitigation and the overall TRT.
And then my, my discussion is, I, I think it's a no-brainer, it's always better to have more options.
Yeah.
Like if I'm going to buy a car and I don't think I want to buy a compact car, it doesn't really help me to say, okay, we're not going to sell it. I just quite want everything to be available. Um, so, that's, so I can, easy question.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, anyone else discussion on this? Please weigh in if you would like to. Bill?
Um, I received a call yesterday from UAC staff regarding this, and that's basically the answer that I gave to them as well.
Okay, yeah, and I, I just, it just as an aside, at the, at the recent UAC conference, and I guess, was it September? I, I had conversations with, uh, with county commissioners from two other counties, I think they were Wayne and definitely Kane. And both of them expressed a lot of desire to have more flexibility with TNT, mostly to deal with, uh, yeah, mitigating effects of tourism in their counties as well. Um, I, I, yeah, anyway. Call for a vote? Yeah, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands, and the motion passes unanimously.
And so who will fill out the survey?
Is that you, Bill, since you're the rep, or?
I can't, that's right, I have it up right here.
Okay.
Do they understand in that survey that it's?
It's, I believe they.
Grand County is a total.
Yes, they asked, that's what they, that's what they requested, is that each county submit only one answer, again, you know, the county that would come to.
Just checking, yes, all of the questions.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and filling it in for Grant. Okay. Great, alright, so we've.
Yeah.
We did. It, it was unanimous. No, I think you raised your hand.
We're good.
Okay, okay, uh, we'll move on to the next item, and that is the, uh, the response, I think it's a response that the item is just called Letter to the State Auditor. And I guess that's a response to the last auditor's letter. Yeah, I, so I'll, I guess I'll start the dis, or, Gabe, do you want to give anything, or we all are pretty familiar with the background, I guess, but?
Just, I, I, I have some materials that I put into the packet yesterday.
Oh, okay.
Um, that's the, the, um, the letter prepared, uh, and approved by this commission on the fourth of November. And it, and the response, the latest response from the state auditor. And then I just added a quick spreadsheet that just summarizes the accounting impacts if, um, the, uh, letter were to be agreed to. Um, and sort of the, the overall takeaway is that, um, bottom line fund balance impacts are, are, um, quite minimal, but there certainly are some things worth discussing in terms of, um, future actions as it relates to, um, discontinuing, uh, certain uses and what to do about that, and especially as it relates to the, uh, Grand County Act of Trails and Transportation. Um, also, I want sort of, um, explicit approval from you all to, um, shift to using Fund Twenty-Three rather than Fund Twenty, or Fund Sixteen, which is titled Economic Development, um, at the request of the state auditor. Um, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Gabe. Stephen?
Uh, I was just gonna point out, yeah, that, uh, the summary of the accounting impact really lines everything out, and I think, um, based on the math, one, we get, uh, a positive reimbursement to the general fund.
Right.
And then that exceeds up a finding three, and finding four is just one other item, and so it's, I think it's important to kind of note that, that it's not gonna be as much of an impact as anticipated.
Alright, any, yeah, further discussion?
What, we're writing a letter in response, or are we, are we discussing, do we, is it a decision item, or what's?
Yeah, so, so next steps, I guess we would want, I mean, it seems like we'd want to write a letter back to the auditor acknowledging, at least.
Yeah, so I, I think it'd be kind of two-point idea of, one, authorize, uh, the court auditor's office to make the changes necessary, uh, consistent with the letter, and then two, a response, I, I think that's really it. I think if, uh, the, previously the commission had, um, identified Commissioner, uh, Chair Hadler and myself to communicate with the state, I think we could continue to make those discussions. Um, but really just making that, those changes, and then being able to report that evidence to them, because I think in the letter they indicated that they wanted to see some particular action before they'll release the funds, so I think that, that would be the goal today, is get everything just wrapped up.
Yeah. Mike?
That follows right along with my question, uh, this, us deciding on this, or, uh, following, if we follow this letter, it will be sufficient evidence to for them to release funds, uh, we'd be at that point, or, I mean, the decision.
I imagine they, they check up on the.
Is what we know.
Accounting, right?
Yeah, I, I think that's what they would do, I think likely, um, court auditor, uh, Hoytek has been in good communication with Seth Overston, I think, I, I doubt that it'll be directly with, um, state auditor too, but likely, uh, Gabe would follow up with Seth, and they would show whatever transfers that they'd necessarily to show, and then, based on our understanding, is within four days of making the changes, they'll release the funds.
Kevin?
Thank you.
Um, so one, I mean, you know, the, the letter talks, talks about a lot of individual topics, individual dollar amounts, and so maybe our discussions are similarly fragmented, but one, one thing that jumped out to me in the letter is, is the, um, the flood relief grants. And I think, you know, their initial letter said, you know, you can't put money into that. And we wrote back and said, well, some of these were funded through the, you know, a different funding source, and I think they misinterpreted, and in their response, they said, um, you know, they, they, they seem to assume in the letter that all of the flood relief grants were funded via economic diversification, but in fact, I think the majority of them were funded through, um, promotion, establishment mode.
If that business was primarily a business.
And they were, okay, but did you, I just wondered whether we want to set the record straight, you know, they, they sort of said we were flip-flopping on that, but in fact, we told them, you know, both sources were used. Um, we, we're depending on the type of businesses that we're giving a grant to, so it's informational, it doesn't.
Right.
Have any.
I'm, I don't have an opinion on it, Stephen, I, I guess I defer to the clerk and the attorney if it came down to that.
I think there may, I mean, I, I think the commission theoretically could approve, Jacque and I, to continue having, um, having the conversations, I think if, and I, I haven't had as many direct conversations with Seth or with, never talked to the state auditor. Um, but I think perhaps listing out maybe some of the items that we're willing to do everything but for this, or?
No, but this, this is not really, um, I mean, they, this is funding that they approved.
Right.
But I think they missed it, you know, we said it's okay because we funded, you know, thirty percent with economic development, seventy percent. They say, oh, you want to fund it all with economic development, that's okay. And, you know, maybe we should be quiet about it, I don't know, but we get, I, I, I think it was also, they, they seemed to imply that, that we, you know, we've been changing our story, which I, I think we haven't, you know, clarifying a bit, um, so, but, you know, I, I haven't had recent conversations with them, so if people think that's a bad communication strategy, fine, but, you know, I think.
Change the bottom line, where do you others, at this point, that's just not.
I, I, I think, I guess my preference would probably be just to strike that.
Yeah, my, my way too.
I would almost, I kind of feel like we're to the point that, uh, the letter almost comes from Gabe of like, here's all the changes you wanted.
Yeah.
Thanks, you know, pretty short, and pretty like.
Yeah, me too.
The proof that they're asking.
Right, exactly, yeah, I don't, I don't think, uh, I think that if it was coming from us, there might be an opportunity for some of that clarifying for historical purposes or whatever, but, uh, that just kind of keeps, feels like we're still kind of going back.
Yeah, potentially you could authorize the clerk auditor to, uh, prepare or make the necessary changes to the budget and accounting that that are necessary to comply with the terms of letter and, and engage in all follow-up communications with the state auditor's office. And that would be essentially it, and then he would just give us an update, they'll open the funds back up.
Yeah, it's, it, the letter didn't really seem like they were looking for more feedback, but I think the initial one was kind of like, hey, this is what we found, what do you think? And we wrote back, it was like, this is what we think, and we're like, well, this is it. So I think that's, you could just kind of like, right, here's the check.
No, the reason I thought, I think it definitely doesn't have a bottom line impact, but, uh, you know, there are other types of impacts. You know, there's been discussion in the state legislature that because Grand County did this or that, you know, and so if, if, you know, the official record, this letter from the auditor says something incorrect about how money was spent, I think it's worth, maybe it doesn't have to be a letter to the auditor, we just spend our minutes, or maybe now I'm saying it on tape, but, um, you know, they, they, and, and this isn't, I don't think this is a, an issue that a lot of people care very much about, but it, you know, I, I think the whole process has been frustrating with me, because every, every letter we get from them, it takes inaccuracies about how we spend our money, and you know, so maybe some of those are our fault for not communicating clearly, but I think some of it's their failure to read, you know, our previous letter, which filled it out clearly, so.
I guess I don't see the implications, um, maybe I'm not understanding enough, Kevin, but if there's implications for what we're doing moving forward, then maybe we should correct them, if it's just a.
I think it's a perception at this.
Perception, well, I, I don't think that it's worth including in the letter, but I don't mind if you include it in the letter, but I don't see the value in it, I guess, unless there are actual implications on our future spendings.
Um, not until the next flood, I guess. Yeah, I think this one has, you know, compared to some of the other items, this is lower priority, so.
Yeah. Mike?
So, alright.
I'd be, um.
Done, moved, right, check.
Yeah, I think I'm, I think I'm in that camp also.
So what you recommend, Stephen, is we just make a motion to instruct the clerk auditor to respond and further, any other further communications, he, he's basically in charge.
Yeah, likely, I think, I think that would just, it would probably just be to doing necessary steps within the letter, I don't know that if, if the commission wants to add on additional things, I think it's better coming from the commissioner, the commissioner in my office, uh, but if you just want kind of compliance and, and go forth, I think that's a, a fair thing to request the court auditor do, and I think he's been, uh, in good communications with Seth about those things.
So I'm gonna make a motion, um, I'm gonna make a motion to have the, um, clerk auditor move forward with drafting a response to the state auditor. And he can have, will just authorize his further communications with the state auditor. And make yes or change.
Alright, motion from Trish, second from Bill.
He got you.
Kevin, you had your hand up still, further discussion?
Um, yeah, no, that, that was, um, I was gonna talk about some other aspect of the letter. Um, and this one does have implications for the future, um, I, I think probably, you know, the biggest, most important item in, um, the letter is to, you know, quote Trail Ambassador spending out of tourism promotion funds, but my impression is that we didn't actually spend tourism promotion money on Trail Ambassador's salaries. Um, we spent it on some s- salaries that were used in production of videos and other, you know, the employees do various different things, but for the, and I, I do think, you know, that, I think our next agenda item depends heavily on, on that, and it's maybe worth having a discussion whether, I mean, you know, it's, take, the reality is we spent recreation and establish and promote money on some of these Trail Ambassador activities, and none of the letters I've seen from the state auditor seem to clearly acknowledge that, and frequently, you know, more than half the time, they refer to it as we're spending tourism money, which again, I think it was not, if I understand the, you know, the budget prescriptions that I looked at earlier, I, I know there's, you know, a strong, I, I you know, share the strong desire to just, you know, finish this and, you know, put it behind us, but this has implications going into the future, and I just wonder if it's worth asking them, and, you know, to just make sure they realize that it wasn't tourism promotion money that was used for that, this, you know, which they seem to state in their letter. Maybe they consider tourism and recreation promotion the same thing with the same rules, but that, that would also be worth knowing if that's what they think, because we, you know, we do have this extra slice of money that can be spent on promoting and establishing recreation, but can't, you know, but doesn't have to be tourism. I think the county has always considered those as two distinct things, uh, with a distinct sets of rules. And so, the auditor's letter, either they're, they're not distinguishing, or they, they understand there's a difference, but they think of spending, you know, guardrails are extremely similar, so with no anguish, which of those is the case, you know, they just, you know, they haven't thought about it carefully, or they have thought about it carefully, they come to a conclusion that's surprising to us.
Is there any reason Gabe just can't ask for some clarification?
That's, that's, that seems like a good first step, yeah.
Okay.
And then you, you understand the issue, Gabe? Okay, I'd be in favor of that, seems reasonable.
I mean, I think that was somewhat encompassed in the motion, do you feel like that?
Okay, I think, uh, I, I think Gabe is very well informed about this topic, I think he's had the opportunity to talk with Seth, and I think he's done a lot of hard work, uh, trying to get to the point where we're at, and, and I, I think he understands what the commission position is and the goals, so I think he's welcome to do this.
And, and now we just add quickly that, you know, maybe Gabe could confer again with Matty about, you know, because I, I think some of this isn't broken out, it's top line, but we're vegging things, and the conclusions I'm drawing are from these more detailed spreadsheets that, you know, despite, because I, I do think that sometimes we, we say Trail Ambassadors, we really need other aspects where it's possible recreation program, I said, so, so.
To be clear, I'm, I'm, I'm seeking clarification for, for our future security and use and good standing.
Right.
Um, not seeking clarification, so as to continue to argue the figures that are presented correctly.
Yeah, I, I, I think the clarification, if we're gonna continue to get this money, we're gonna have to spend it somewhere, and we want to know, you know, just where they're gonna be sensitive.
Okay, alright, you feel that was, uh, the motion was sufficient to address that?
The, the clerk?
Okay.
It says, yeah.
Perfect, yes. Okay, anything else before we vote on it?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to just mention, you know, the last sentence in their letter there, or at least bring attention to it, where they're gonna seek additional clarification, and I believe what that's surrounding is that there are a couple bills being run around TRT, one of which we just voted on earlier. And I believe it's important that the level of professionalism on this bench, when we're discussing the state auditor or the state legislator, legislators themselves, that we raise that level of professionalism here. We can't be making derogatory remarks about our state leaders and then up there asking them to give us more leniency in a TRT bill, and to some degree, there's some damage control that's gonna have to come out of this at the state level, and that's going to involve us moving forward, and I would just like to see a little higher level of professionalism, and if you have personal feelings about the state leaders up there, why, keep them to yourself, or take them home to your partner, but I, I don't think they should be voiced here publicly in this setting.
Anyone else before I call for a vote on the motion?
I, I, I'm just gonna disagree with that statement, as legislators, that's what we do, we have discussions, we disagree, we agree. We can disagree with the state, the state disagrees with the feds all the time, and so it's okay, we don't need to concede. But we represent a variety of people down here, and so I think we do a really good job, honestly, of representing that variety of people down here. And so I think it's okay to state that there are times that we, I never stated the other night, and I'm gonna re, I'm gonna make this very clear, that I dislike the state legislature, I said I disagreed on their findings, specifically when it related to Trail Ambassador program. And so I think it is okay that we disagree sometimes, and that the state understands that we disagree sometimes, and hopefully they're able to make better decisions, encompassing all of our opinions, and know that there is a variety of people that exist on this landscape in the state of Utah, so, I, it's okay.
I'm gonna.
Professionalism.
I think, I.
So, so, yeah, so I'm gonna, I, I think, we're getting into an aside, I think.
I think I was perfectly professional in my statement the other day.
I, I interpreted what Bill said, it's just, you know, we need to be polite and not exaggerate, and stuff like that, you know, it's common sense things, and I, and I agree with, I agree with that, I think we usually do it, and maybe sometimes we slip up, and we should just need to be careful, so, so I, but, and, and I also agree with Trish that, you know, we have to say what we think, but.
Really quick, Mike?
All for vote.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do. Alright, uh, call for a vote on the motion, uh, Commissioner Hadeen made the motion, Commissioner Winfield seconded it to allow the clerk to write his letter according to the discussion that we've had, all in favor of the motion, and that passes unanimously. Alright, um, now we can get into our, uh, budget workshop, and we have, I think, Gabe, you're here for the next half an hour? Forty minutes, something like that, okay, um, did you want to kick the, actually, so I need to close the regular meeting and then start the workshop, is that?
Well, actually, I mean, the agenda.
It looks like it was. Just says budget workshop.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's more, I mean, this next item is budget line, in action, in action.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll keep the, we'll consider this part of the meeting then, I think is the cleanest way to do it, and just have a discussion about. No, it's more of a.
Final decision on budget, it's a discussion.
It's more of a discussion, correct, yeah, okay.
Somebody wants to challenge this, that, you know.
Fantastic.
Risk is exceptionally low.
Okay, so this is a, this is a budget workshop discussion, I guess we'll call it, and I would, uh, turn this over to our, uh, clerk Gabriel Hoytek to guide us in this discussion.
So, in a nutshell here, uh, you know, going back to that accounting impacts line, uh, there was the one eighty-two reimbursement um, to the general fund for Trail Ambassador salaries, there's, I think, you know, I think that there might be a mislabeling of that amount in terms of what that actually applies to, and I agree that clarification is, uh, coming forward, but really what we're talking about is, uh, in the packet, it's also included uh, GCAT Tourism Promotion Funding Summary, um, and so the, the main thing that we are gonna want to know here is that, uh, or, or, we're, I just want to, we should open a discussion about, you have Matty Logwitz here, Director of, uh, Grand County Act of Trails and Transportation, uh, but one hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars uh, total, uh, is, uh, is currently allocated, or has currently been removed from the twenty-twenty-five budgets uh, to support Fund Forty-seven, uh, of that, one hundred and twenty-one, seventy-two was, uh, allotted for salaries, forty-eight was allotted for programming. Um, and so ultimately, that, that creates a, a gap in the funding for that, um, fund, and, and I, so I just, uh, Matt, Matty, uh, wanted to be available to discuss, um, how her department, um, might respond to that shortfall, and, and you all can discuss how you might also want to respond.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something too, is I, I also asked through Quinn to ask Matty to come, because it was, we were discussing her, her department as well, so that was, that was partially on me, but I'm very happy to have Matty here.
So, can we have Matty come up?
Yeah, I think so, that'd be great.
Quick question.
Sure, Mike, what's up?
Is some of the information we're gonna hear back from Gabe gonna affect this decision?
It's.
In terms of like the, the state, I'm sorry, the state auditor.
Yeah, yeah, it's the state auditor request for clarification gonna affect any of this?
I think it's.
I mean, I think we're already, we already know that that line, that, the allocation of tourism.
Yeah.
Promotion funds, GCAT was sealed out, and that's what the state auditor wants to see.
Okay.
And so I, I, I real certainly think that, that, and my.
Okay.
But, but I, I thought Mike's question was, was you have a conversation with the state auditor, and they say, oh, yeah, you know, helping produce videos, we're okay with that, and that it's, so it seems like it could have implications for this future year.
I was thinking along those lines, like if they.
Because it does seem like, actually, my impression, I'm, please just cut in if, if I'm wrong, but, you know, most of the sal, you know, there are these people, and most of their salaries paid from elsewhere, but some of them, that's paid by tourism establish and promote, and I thought that was just in proportion to actual messaging that was produced, like, you know, the YouTube video that got a million views, or that kind of thing. And the state auditor is that they're already okay, you know, with the production costs of this, this video, so you would think they would also be okay with the staff time that went in to producing those videos, and so that, that's the curious thing about the most resistant auditor letter, um.
But, in my view, that's a twofold thing, because I want to say yes to get taxes flowing again to the zero, but for few, this is all future.
Yeah.
Uh, future use, like, this does not pertain to the letter.
Right, yeah, no, I, I, I'm not, yeah, so this, this is future budget, so it doesn't affect everything, so.
Clarification, at least future clarification.
Anyway, I ju, I just think that's something we need to. See what you're saying, worth having a conversation with Seth.
Yeah, and actually, um, and I know there was some conversation at the Tuesday night commission meeting, um, I watched the recording of it, so I put together this spreadsheet to hopefully try and like provide uh, the background on like what we did two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and then our original requests for two thousand twenty-five. And then I think what I'm hoping, um, you guys can find me with today is that, you know, looking at that, um, about a hundred and twenty thousand number that Gabe provided, if we're, if we're assuming that that's probably gonna be the budget cut, um, there's another budget meeting on Monday, so I think my weekend project is gonna be going through the budget and trying to figure out how to balance it, and so I think what I'm hoping to get, you know, pending maybe some clarification from the auditor, is just priorities from the commission of like, what stuff do you like really want to see stay, and what stuff do you want to see goes, that I can have, you know, a little bit of, um, guidance with this sort of short timeframe to make these changes. So, um, if they want.
Hey, hey, Matty, real quick, Stephen had a question about the actual spreadsheet.
So the, I'm on the spreadsheet, it's green, it has the yellow, can we share those, like, there's, we've got a few spreadsheet skills, right?
I can't, can you help me do that?
We, we.
Okay, uh.
Or is it, is it the spreadsheet, the packet, can I share?
It's in the packet, yeah, and someone's able to pull that up, just.
It's the one, the, are we looking at the original twenty twenty-five proposed program line items spreadsheet, Matty?
Um, so it's, I, I believe it's called two thousand twenty-five GCAT Budget Continency, yeah.
Obviously, I don't have anything that's.
I think it was, oh, there's the original twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five budget request establishing promoting tourism funding, and then there's also one that is titled Original Twenty-Five Proposed Program Line Items.
Okay, yeah, so maybe I, I'm looking at it like my original documents, so it might look a little bit different, but basically I have an overview page, and then a detail of the staffing, like the original staffing, uh, request or plan, and then the original detailed line items.
Yeah.
The packet, one you're looking at is titled Summary of Accounting Impacts, State Auditor.
You want me to share it?
That'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, that would be great, yeah.
And I think, Mike, are you talking about, is it the, um, the line items? It's kind of colorful. Yes.
Gotcha on the line, oh.
Okay, I've got it.
Okay, you got it. Are you in the meeting?
Or, sorry, I haven't, I'm looking at it, I don't have it shared.
Where do you seem to get there?
Thank you. Yes.
My, my question was gonna be, what are the, on the columns, the one that says like two hundred and one, two hundred, what would be, what would be the headings over that?
Two hundred and one. Oh, for like all the numbers? Uh, that is the cost per item, the quantity, and then the subtotals.
Okay, cost per item, quantity subtable, that makes sense, yeah.
So, for example, like program shed additions, that would be two hundred dollars for the all the additions, the unit is one, and then the total, or the subtotal of that category.
Right, so column one times column two equals column three.
And if you guys want to, I can, I have it as an Excel spreadsheet, so you can look at formulas and stuff.
And then that is, and the yellow lines, is that all TRT or just Tourism Establish and Promote TRT?
So, yeah, so the, um. See, maybe we should start with the overview, just to kind of orient you guys. So we're looking at the same thing, so for this, so this overview, and again, this is all like the original two thousand twenty-five budget that will be changed, but basically. Within my department, there's two programs, there's the Trail Crew that works on the trail infrastructure, which we're not talking about, and then there's the, um, Responsible Recreation Program. And then I think, Kevin, that was a good point, like, within that program, we have, you know, our full-time staff who have more of an office season because they're full-time year-round, and so they're doing a variety of projects. And then we have our field staff, or the Trail Ambassadors, who are really just employed in the spring and fall, and they're just out in the field talking to people. There's sort of a, a little bit of a scope of services there. And then, um. So within this program, there's the Establishing and Promoting Tourism portion of TRT, which is what the audit cited as the ineligible use of funds. And then there's the Film Recreation Convention form of TRT, which they did not cite, and so that's actually the majority of, um, the budget. What we've been in the past, what we've been using, the, um, Establishing and Promoting. Tourism specifically funds for, uh, if you look at this. Yellow box right here, and this, I think, Kevin, you kind of mentioned this, so, so basically the way we got the portion of Establishing and Promoting Tourism funds. That go towards salaries is we looked at our hours and like roughly. You know, an estimate of how many hours are we spending working on these, um, like more promotional projects where we, you know, walk over to the Economic Development Office? And we sit down and make these videos or podcasts and whatnot, so that's how we came up with those numbers. Um, and then the portion that has been going to program line items, that colorful sheet that we just looked at that has all those line items. Um, I mean, so everything highlighted in that pale yellow, those are ones that in the past we've used as establishing and promoting. Funds because they're more like merchandise that are branded. Oh, TRT, or?
Which part?
Oh, Establishing and Promoting Tourism.
Tourism, not, not recreation.
Yes. Yeah, and, and. The language I've been using or that is in my budget is, you know, Establishing and Promoting Tourism, which is the part that, you know, is under discussion today. And then the Film Recreation Convention, so. Sorry if I get those. But yeah, so for those line items, so everything that's, uh, you know, not highlighted, that's just a white, those are film recreation. Funds, and then everything highlighted in that pale yellow is Establishing and Promoting Tourism, and so that includes like the stickers, badges, pins we hand out. Um, some rebranding, water bottles, uh, wrapping the OHV, they have one wrapped, this will be next year. Um, boosting social media posts. And then all the ones highlighted in blue are ones where we're working with economic development, and so there's like, you know, some parts of it. We're doing, some parts of it their staff are doing. Um, so that's kind of the. Summary I wanted to give you guys, and then, you know, if we're looking at downsizing and reducing the scope of the program for next year. Um. You know, sort of at the early phases of like exploring what options, but I think. Uh, my personal priorities, and again, like, I definitely wanna hear feedback from the commission, but. I mean, the first cuts I would look at are definitely the program expenses and trying to bring those down to bare bones because. We do have really excellent staff at this point, we have really great retention, um, they're dedicated, they're well-trained, and so trying to preserve their positions. And avoid layoffs, I think would be our, our main priority, uh, and then. Yeah.
Sorry, have you switched from to the other, the other one, or you just, sorry, sorry.
Um, no, so I, so that was kind of a little bit of an overview that maybe use some of those other. Sheets, and then this section here, the revised budget options for downsizing, reducing program services, I don't have like a. Detailed spreadsheet for you guys, I think that's probably the project for Monday, uh, but just generally, these are my thoughts so far. And then, um, unfortunately, there's not as many grants available for trail education as there are for trail infrastructure, like there's a healthy number of grants for building new trails at maintenance. Um, the pool is a little bit smaller for education, but there definitely are some options that I'm looking at, so I would definitely, uh. Be excited to apply to those in the spring to try and flush, flush out those areas where we might need some funds. Um, some other thoughts I had for options for for dialing back the program would be. You know, one option is just looking at the program line items and kind of doing a sweeping percentage cut, um, I could focus on specific line items. Maybe a combination of those, I've also talked to HR about the possibility of doing a mandatory furlough for full-time staff. Which would save, um, about ten thousand dollars, and then we could, um, and this is my. Least favorite option, but reducing the hours or positions for the permanent staff. So I think what I'm curious about is, um, and you know, this might be something you guys wanna think on, but if. You have priorities of things you'd like me to look at to keep or things you'd like me to cut.
Uh, Trish.
So, I guess I'm just gonna make some kind of. Broad comments, um, I think it'd be great, Maddie, if you'd look at just, you know, reducing some line items of things that you feel are fluffy. But, you know, and I think that's, that, you know, that, that's on, a little bit on you, um. If you could cut a little bit, and I can't tell you what percent of the one twenty-one I want you to cut, but if you, if you make some cuts, I don't want you to lose staff either. At this point, um, my, my opinion is the commission then backfill, we fill in that void. For two thousand and twenty-four and hope that with this legislation that's coming up, that it would loosen it up to where. In, in two thousand and twenty-six, we would be back rolling again, and if we, if we're, we don't think we will, which we would know after the legislative session. You know, we can, you, we can move into two thousand and twenty-six knowing that there were gonna, gonna have to be some cuts, but. I I have a hard time at this point, in a very short period of time, knowing that Maddie would have to be hacking, uh. You know, we'd be losing employees, hacking jobs, um, I I don't, you know, so that, that's my opinion. That she does a little bit of cutting of anything that she feels is pretty fluffy, you know, it could be stickers, could be patches, and maybe we can get that down to a hundred grand. And then we backfill it for two thousand and twenty-five and and hope that the legis- legislature will, will loosen up their, their. Brains on TRT a little bit, and if not, then we have that two thousand twenty-six, twenty-five to kind of look at harder at her programming. Um, I, I do feel for you, I have to do the same thing with Adult Ed, I've got this very tight budget that is, um. I've done it for years and years and years, where every single year I have to look really hard at what I have, what I can spend, and sometimes it means. I cut people, and it's, it's, I, it is not a fun place to be, but I don't wanna see that within the next three weeks.
Yeah, and I agree, this is, the, the timing is, is, is rough, because we've already basically come to an agreement on the majority of the budget. So that makes it extra hard, um, I, my, I, I totally agree with, with, with not, um. Getting rid of people, I think, I think, you know, I, I, I know a lot of these folks, I've seen them, I think they're really good employees, and they're, um, they're, they're good. They're good people and they depend on, on their job like, like the rest of us, um, and, uh, I. Think it's important to come up with ways to continue to keep the program going right now, I think, you know, knowing that these are gonna be the guardrails that we have to work. Within next year, we'll, we'll have a whole year to look at, look at the bigger picture and be able to, um, modify things. Like you said, look, look for some of those places that there might be grants for education and, and, uh, maybe potential legislative changes. Et cetera, but, but it's a priority for me to, to keep the program robust for the, the next year, for sure. Kevin?
Um, I, I guess I, I feel similarly in that, I, I do. You know, you mentioned that there might be other ways to make up the funding, like, you know, these grants, we won't know about that. Um, I'm also, you know, because of the weight nature of this, and because I think it's a good program, it's a work-winning program. You know, at least, at least for next year, I'd be able to feel fine with, um, making some general funny, general fund money in there to. You know, prevent us from making drastic changes, you know, I would have hoped, if you already cut the fluff out of the budget, but if there's additional fluff that could be cut, sure. Um, and I think, I think what counts as fluff or not might be different if you're funded from the general fund versus funded from rec film conventions. P things, but, um. But I, I guess what I also wanna throw in there is that. You know, looking at this yellow table where the tourism establish and promote money has gone. My understanding is that none of it's gone, well, none of it's gone to people, trail ambassadors on the ground picking up, you know, the, the things. That the auditor letter said were not okay are things that we're not planning on spending money on in two thousand twenty-five. Were spent, planning on spending money on, again, correct me if I'm wrong, it's. You know, help with blog posts and videos and things that, things that turn into messaging. Um, and I think. It's. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed like the audit letter said that the, like, materials expenses for those things or paying consultants, they were okay with. But then, it's, but then would they also be okay with, you know, some fractional salary? So that, I, I think it's worth clarifying that, you know, maybe it turns out that we can't spend some tourism establish or promote. If these people are spending time making videos that are gonna be viewed by tourists. So, um, you know, we can also make some adjustments to make it clear that it fits that. So anyway, I, I think there's a lot of different options for funding, and so I'm, I'm in favor of keeping it, you know, close to as is.
I was, I, I actually just wanted to, I wanted to start out with this, and I totally forgot, but I, I think it's ironic that we're talking about the program right here, when. I think it was just two days ago, uh, Maddie sent us all an email talking about the, uh, the award that was recently won, which is actually a huge deal. It's the twenty-twenty-four Leave No Trace Community Partner of the Year Award, Leave No Trace is an internationally recognized gold standard pro-, uh, um. I don't know what do you call it, not a program, but a, but an organization, I guess, that, that, that credits things, and, and this is, I mean, people talk about Leave No Trace in Europe. And, and other continents, and that's, it's also like a, a, a massive thing to crow about and to attract tourists here, there, when, when people look at destinations. They look for things like this in their destinations, I just wanted to add that, Mike.
It's very hard, uh. I like some of the work you do, really, I've seen you guys out, uh, personally and with my family, uh. But it's very hard for me to, I, I love getting clarification. Uh, applying a cut budget, I mean, we're all doing it, but it's really hard for me to dedicate or to already dedicate general fund money. When we had ambulance in here. Days ago, asking for money, it's not that you don't rank high, but when I call, I don't call GCAT, I call an ambulance, so, uh. Uh, it, it's, it's not a how it ranking, but. Uh, I mean, we're all cutting, so it's, it's what we gotta do right now.
Uh, Kevin?
Talking about funding from other places, uh. Is there value in looking at who else is receiving, what other departments are getting funded through the Film Rec Convention? And is there room there to make up some of these differences? Like this, uh, the twenty-two percent, the hundred and twenty-one thousand would be okay to spend from rec film conventions, correct?
Yeah, so, uh, that would be, uh, the Film Commission and the, um, allocation that we made, we've made annually to the Recreation Special Service District. Those are the only other two recipients of that, one-fifth.
And there we, what was that, uh, donation to the rec department?
Hundred and thirty-seven.
So that would more than cover these shortcomings. If we were to not make that contribution this year or at that level.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we'd wanna make some contribution for sure, and that's, and a lot of that goes to, oh, no, it does actually go to OSA. Too, but we just approved the line item for.
Yeah, but I mean, so, yeah, well, we were approving bullpens.
Right.
We're putting a lot of money in the, the rodeo. Business, and I mean, we have a hundred thousand dollar cash purse at one of the events this year, and it's just like, when I start, when, if we wanna start looking at priorities.
Yeah.
I would like that, I don't know if I wanna put the ambulance on the chopping block, but if we're looking at, uh. What all's going on at OSA, where this rec money's going, you know, the, the. I personally like rodeos, I think they're, uh. You know, we're renting steers, we're paying insurance out the wazoo, and I just don't know if that's like. The best use, if I had to put the, the, this department on the scale against these big rodeo efforts, I would tip them more towards the responsible rec.
Yeah, and I think, I think another point for me is, I think, I think we're definitely gonna go into an area of increased, uh, promotion spending, and I'm fine with that. But I think with that, we, we should be expecting more people in town to recreate on these trails, and I think it's gonna be more important. Uh, than ever to, to have some level of, uh, of, of, of protection for not just the trails, but the tourists themselves. And I think this program goes a long way towards that, um, I think far more people come to. Grand County to recreate on our, on our trails than they do to, like you said, go to the rodeo, so I think that's a, that's a valid.
Um, I, maybe Mike can speak to this, I'm trying to remember what their budget was, but the rodeo, specifically the rodeo. They borrow money from the rec department and repay it, they borrow thirty grand for the PRCA rodeo, um. And then I'm trying to remember, uh, uh, the rest of their budget, cuz I was there that night, um, but, you know, it's, it's a lot of little programs that they give. A thousand dollars to, five thousand dollars to, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there, and, and the rec, I've been on the rec board, I mean, that money's well spent, I, I, certainly not arguing with that, but, but, uh, uh, some, some from that, I think.
Right.
Spending it towards, uh, this, I would, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with.
I guess to me, it's like. You know, are these things that, these are all things that we could figure out in two thousand and twenty-five, we just fund it. Um, and then, and then we. Oh, we're talking, yeah, I don't, I'm struggling, or within weeks.
Yeah. Right, Kevin?
Um, yeah, so I guess, I mean, I think we're about to run out of time, I think what, what I will propose is, you know, we. Maddie looks for places to make some, some cuts, um. And, you know, not, not the full hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, we could. Budget it initially just out of the general fund, but to hope that some of that would be funded by grants, and then, and then also that after. Gabe discussed, you know, maybe after further clarification with the auditor, I discover that some of this, like, stuff that was. Most directly tied for advertising, but you know, could still be spent at as much as right now, and then that would also. Bill, and I, I, the reason I propose that is that these things, uh. None, none of these have been called out in the auditor letters as proper spending, as far as I can tell, they talk about picking up trash is not appropriate. You know, telling tourists to stay on the trail, you know, like, but, you know, those, those are people whose salaries are not paid, they're tourism establishment promoter. Instead, we have videos.
It shouldn't be a clarifying point since we're in a public meeting, but, um, also that, that line, that trail ambassadors pick up trash, they actually don't do that, just so you guys know. Um, I think there's a little bit of general confusion in the community about what those, uh, staff are doing in the field, and so at some point, that's not today. But I would love to, uh, you know, maybe give a presentation that really goes through who, who they are, what, what they do, um, and then also, uh. You know, it's very quiet right now, there's not a lot going on, um, those skilled staff are laid off right now, but when it gets busy, I would love if you guys. Wanted to come out, you know, go out with Kelton and UTV, it's pretty great, um, or you could go out on the bike trails or hiking trails, but just maybe get a firsthand experience of that program.
He wants a bike, I want a UTV, but.
Well, I, I apologize for accusing them of picking up trash.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify.
No, I think that's a good point, and I think that, you know, that having the job descriptions match, um. Uh, not just what actually is happening on the ground, but, uh. The funding goals. Being able to share that when people are asking, so it's like, oh, you have to catch our one annual presentation. But if people are asking, it's like, this is the job description, kind of like picking up trash there.
Bill, will you next?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I I mean, I want to come back to the point that income is down across the county. And expenses are up. And we did just have, to Mike's point, the E M S in here begging for money, and I believe. As we move forward here, this department now is going to be the third largest department in the county salary and employee wise. I for one would like to see that change. I I don't think that, and and to Jacques's point, uh. It's great that we're getting these awards, but there, this used to be done by a nonprofit, and now we're going to be the. Third largest salary department in the county, so. I think that if we don't do it now, we're going to do it. In twenty twenty five, as Trish says, and we're going to have to start looking at doing this different, and I personally. Think that we could start some things through admin, and that is, you know, you've got a huge list of items here that you want to buy and add. But where is your inventory of what's existing? So when, and that's, and I'm not just picking on one department, I think through all departments that it would be great. For admin to start asking when people are wanting to to purchase things, where are we at with our inventory? Because. When the economy isn't in a positive growth situation, we should be burning up inventory rather than stockpiling it. And so it's, it isn't just this department that we could be doing that, and I, it isn't just your department either, but this idea that we need to rebrand. We, we don't need to rebrand Moab right now, and not in this department or in the other ones that are asking to spend money to rebrand, and so. We've got a ambulance service that services our community, parts of San Juan community. All the way out to the freeway to the Colorado line that needs money, and yet we're advocating continually to increase budgets around here. And there are departments right now, and you can talk after I'm done, Matty. There are departments that are begging for employees right now. We need help in the recorder's office. The previous discussion, we've lost maps. We need help in the assessor's office, and we need help for the flooding issues. And I see plenty of room to move some of this money in that direction, and I am not in favor of expanding this department in any way, shape, or form. And I think that we've got to start looking at what are essential services right now while the economy is down. And how are we going to meet those needs of the essential services? And it it just needs to to be reined in a little bit. I I can't believe that we're trying to grow this department. At a time when the economy is flat and when at a time when. Do the other department heads get to have a say in this? Is it more important that we have full-time staff here? When most of the staff is part-time, we've got a coordinator here that for three months. I guess they're probably working on some some things. We don't really know what they're doing, but these full-time employees. To handle part-time employees doesn't make any sense to me, and so. I I think we've got to start looking at this budget, not just this department, but this budget overall. Of where the county's priorities are when finances are tight, and right now it's flooding. It's mitigation out there. It's getting some help for the assessor's office, which affects every property owner in this county. And is it important what this department does? Yes, it is, but again, this department. Shouldn't be the third largest salary department in Grand County. So I I just, I'm not in favor of what we're talking here. I'd like to see some help from admin on this one. And we start looking at inventories. I'd also like the commission to understand that. Going forward, there's a different perspective next year. There is a totally different perspective, and that that needs to be. Considered when we're making decisions this year.
I'd like to clarify some points. Um, I think the first point is that we have a large budget. Um, eighty percent is grant funded, so and our grants are reimbursement. So basically. If we don't spend what we receive in grant awards, we don't get that money in revenue, so the county doesn't necessarily gain. By by cutting certain line items. It's a bit nuanced. Um, I'd also like to clarify, our budget request for this year is smaller than last year, so we're not asking for any increases at all.
Also, I think the, uh, you mentioned the recorder and the assessor's office. We we specifically asked them if they needed any more employees, and they both came back to us that they did not want. Further employees, but uh, I'll go to Mike.
Sorry, that's great. Partial piggyback here. I I do better with numbers. Uh, I mean, to speak on Evan's point, uh. Yeah, uh. Certain things outrank or out importance other things. Uh, but I don't know how many people the rodeo brings to town versus how many people we promote to. Uh, uh, in in G C A, I I don't, I don't know those numbers, and I I would really love to know those numbers. Not to put more work on you, but, uh, I I really like to know those numbers, but across the board. I mean, not just, not just with Matty's department. I'd like to know those. Hey, we reached, we spent a dollar, we reached ten people.
We we do have the uh, the their programs, like, like Anna keeps very careful track of how many people they talk to out there, and she gives us a presentation every year, and that's. I I totally can't remember off the top of my head, but it's high double or high five digits.
Agreed, and I'd like that for most of it. I'd like that to com- to be comparable, I have to have the metrics across the board. Uh, to make a decision, uh, not to just.
We also do have, and I can include, you know, I know everyone probably wants to get to lunch. I can include this in a more expansive. Presentation, but for example, if we look at our social media account, we've reached, um. For two thousand twenty three, we reached over two hundred thousand people with our so, yeah, our social media outreach. So we do have numbers on that type of stuff. I can't, yeah, say how that compares to other departments, but. And um, I guess, Bill, to your point about like, what are people doing in the off season? I mean, part of that is we're looking at the results of our programming and trying to make those improvements and tracking what we're doing, so. Um, you know, we we commissioned U S C to do analysis of our program, so we, you know, we're really not trying to s- spend money without figuring out what we're getting in return.
Uh, Kevin?
Um, so, just a quick, so last, in twenty twenty four, this past year, you got no money from the general fund, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, so I I think it's a little misleading to, you know, talk about tight tightness of question on general fund and then. Say this is the third largest department, but it's largely grant funded, or and then part that isn't grant funded comes from restricted funds that we can't spend on an ambulance. So, yeah, it's. So, you know, the weed department's in a similar thing. I I, if you would ask me, we need to spend an extra five hundred thousand dollars on weeds, I would say, no way, that's not a priority. But they're drawing from funds that can only be spent on weeds, so it's okay, and I I think similarly. The reasons the department has a big budget is they're getting grants that have to be spent on those kinds of things. And so we're talking about going from zero general fund going in to there to perhaps as much as a hundred thousand as a sort of interim measure. Um, because it's, you know, late breaking. On, so I I I hope it's less than that. I hope we can find some other grants or we find some other cuts or things like, things like that, but, um. And then, you know, twenty twenty six will be a new year, and maybe at that point, with a lot of preparation, we say, okay, yes. Great program, but we expect you to find other funding sources, you know, not spending general fund money. That, that's not a crazy thing to say, but I I do think it's it's. It doesn't make sense, and it doesn't help the debate to to compare this partner's budget with other spending priorities, but. We can't really transfer money because it's largely grants, so. You know, it it, and it budgeting, I I think it took me years to get this straight, you know, Grand County, we've received so many different sets of funds, and I was like, I can't believe we're spending money on weeds. And the reason is, we get lots of different money with lots of different restrictions, and it's it's tricky to keep track of which ones are general fund and really do have an impact. But I think, um, all this past G C A spending we've been doing is, it's not money that could go to.
I think I gave us, yeah, totally, and ju- just, and I think one, like, important clarification or just way to sort of. Label the dynamic that you're describing is the general fund is funded large in uh, in large part or in a big way, um. In a significant way by property taxes, and so that, so when the public thinks about the general fund and what we s- and and some of these priorities of of. You know, the revenues that we receive, um, in a big way, we're talking about property taxes. That's what the public is interested in, and so. Um, yes, there is this, um, as you're suggesting, a potential um, allocation of that type of revenue to to. To float this program, um, but other, you know, in in the past. Um, and, you know, that that hasn't been, that revenue or that property tax revenue hasn't gone to support the the trails activity. And so it's it's only, it's only been restricted revenue that can only be used in certain ways. I I do think that the the larger point that Bill is talking about with regards to priorities and. And and, you know, making sure that we're, you know, tracking with revenue, I think, I I think it remains valid. It's, I don't think it's disputing that point. The phil- the philosophy, I I think still rings true.
Yeah, Mike?
Uh, to help form my decision, uh, please get back with me. If you do have to leave, please go ahead. Uh, but please get back with me with the information if you hear about. I mean, where where the money's gonna come from, or at least potential of where money's gonna come from in the letter set. So.
Okay, since.
Get that info to me when you can.
Steven, you said you had a question, Matt?
Yeah, just just a quick or clarification question. I can't remember, um, exactly the context, but. Steve Valls corrected the figure of eighty percent on grants to fifty percent, but I don't remember the exact context. Um, because he made that correction at one of the meetings, but I'm not, I'm not certain what the, what the information was behind that. Um, I don't know if the other commissioner knows.
I remember that as well.
I think it was, I think it had to do with the, uh, some of the, uh, bike path funding, was that right?
That that may have been it, I just.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a, that's also another reason that, like, my department is talking expenditures, is because there's about two million dollars in there that's just for the Spanish really drive pathway. That's grant funded, and so, you know, those are capital improvements, but they.
They, they're go through that, right?
Yeah.
That's a big one.
But, yeah, most of our, um, staff have at least a proportion of grant funding.
Should we, Gabe had to leave, how much more of this conversation do you want to carry on without Gabe here? I think it's.
I guess I just want to kind of just give like some kind of anecdotal, just a quick story, um. I I was on the original founding members of the Friends of Indian Creek. I don't know how many years ago that was, twenty, and because we were seeing these impacts to what we were doing to that climbing area. And I say we because we were all climbers, and so we developed this little, you know, nonprofit and started working about. On mitigating our impacts. The reality is, when you bring the amount of visitors that we are to a desert-specific ecosystem. You need to mitigate the impacts of the visitors. Brian knows this with with boating. You know it with with. You know, biking, with climbing, et cetera, and so on, and and you have to rise to the level of. Starting to reach more people with programs like this, you know, that's the reality. We have to reach more people that you're in this desert ecosystem. This is how you behave in the system. It's, it's, it's a big ask, but and it's good, it takes a lot of people and hands on deck to do it. And so I do support this program for that. It takes more than just hoping that when people come here, they'll do the right thing, because they don't know. What to do. They don't know, you know, they just don't know, and so we have to be on deck and providing that education.
And I'd also add that it it actually protects our asset, keeps it viable for the future as an economic asset. If we, if our trails are trashed. And people are just, yeah, willy-nilly, we're, we're gonna have a lot less visitation in the future, because it's just not going to be a.
That's right.
A great product and everyone else.
We now know that rec in this state is a billion, you know, over a billion-dollar industry. People are coming here to recreate. We need to be taking care of these lands that they recreate. We have to. So go ahead, Matty, you, I think she was next, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, Matty, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, yeah, actually, one thing we're working on, uh, which we don't have the numbers for it yet, but getting economic assessments of like, what is the value of. Crown Arch and like, how much does Crown Arch bring into our community every year? Uh, that's kind of a work in progress, but something I think is kind of an interesting way to think about. The recreation economy. Uh, and then just one more thing to add too, because, um, you know, during this audit process, you know, we we really looked at, um, like visitor surveys and. Uh, you know, the arches had done and the results of our U S U study, but, you know, since COVID, there's a lot more people in the outdoors who are like that novice entry level. And there is a really big appetite in our visitors for having like that sort of national park experience, right, where they go and talk to a park ranger and have those interactions. And so I think that's something we're trying to provide to the public, like they show up at Crown Arch Trailhead, they're maybe expecting. A different type of infrastructure experience that we're currently providing, and so how do we give that to them? How do we, you know, provide them with those things that enhance their experience? So. Next presentation, I can treat that.
Yeah, uh, Bill, go ahead and then Kevin.
I guess I just want to sp- bring us back to the point, and this isn't, Matty, this isn't personal. About your department, but the point is, is that this commission body has been doing everything they can to turn off tourism. They've gone to every avenue they could to change promotional advertising, which has decreased. The revenue of this county. You have personally lowered the revenue of this county. You've lowered the revenue in people's pockets that work in this county, and we're asking to continually build a department up. That deals with tourism. We can't have it both ways. We can't. So we either have to work. Towards a positive growth. I've said this many times, and it doesn't have to be the state average is fifteen percent. There's many businesses in town that would be happy with five or six, but it can't be negative and continue to grow departments. It can't in any shape or form. We have got to rein in spending in this department and many others. We've got to look at essential services. We've got to do a hiring freeze. We've got to do a race freeze. We have to be realistic to the effects. That the lack of promotional advertising has had on this county. Now, I'm not somebody that wants to see it turned back to the days after COVID. I'm not. But you can't find a business in town that won't tell you they'd like to see a few more bucks thrown in here, and we've got to work towards that, and that means. That Matty, you have to promote promoting tourism as well as anybody else instead of. Even some of the departments that come in here, the nonprofits and different things that we fund, they want an increase in their budget this year. I I don't even remember which ones they were. They wanted more money, but yet do they help us to promote and to grow the base that we have? I I don't think so. I think the majority of what goes on of some of these groups is no, we don't want any more tourism. But yes, we want more money, and the two don't go hand in hand, and so we have to figure out a way. To start cutting departments if we're going to continue to cut tourism. Um, thank you.
Yeah, I, it sounds like a conversation we've had before. I I think there is.
Pretty big increase in advertising this year's budget, so.
Thank you.
And, um. I'll say it, say it again, since it didn't seem to sink in, you know, a lot of, especially this apartment's budget's big because it pulls in a lot of grants. And I I, even if we were tightening them, there was a lot. I don't think we'd start turning down grant funding. I don't know, but a show of solidarity with the departments that depend on the general, it just doesn't make sense. Anyway, it's it's sound, I don't, it it sounds like we've converged, at least a majority of people have converged to a position, which is, as an interim. You know, we'll enter this in the budget as maybe an extra one hundred thousand dollars, um, general fund expense, but we expect. You know, we hope we don't spend nearly that much, because you'll find grants or find additional cuts or something like that. Um, and if you're doing it that, it's a little sloppy, but this is late breaking news. You know, if we had this news three or four months ago, it could have been a more orderly thing. So my impression is, I don't. If we can communicate to Gabe, if there's a majority of us who want to proceed along that path, you know, this is an official action, like a show of hands to. Stick in the budget.
Mike?
I don't feel comfortable about giving any out of the general fund without information from Matty. I don't feel comfortable about giving any out of the general fund without information from Matty and Gabe. Future sources. I do hope we, they can find them. I, I really do. Uh, but. General fund is straight to a taxpayer. Taxpayer wants an ambulance funded more than. And it, it's simple when it comes to that. Uh, if it was a different funding source, I do understand, but. We're thinking, we're planning on throwing a hundred thousand out of general fund.
Um, I, I guess I'm, I, I have forgotten, I meant to say earlier, I forgot. I think we did end up funding, like, sending the EMS payment. You know, in proportion to what they're spending on the ambulance, and we're, you know, hoping that they can bring it into a new revenue stream and depend on the general fund there. So I. I don't think it's true that we're turned down the ambulance. We didn't respond to that. Uh, that was about the same, yeah, ninety-five thousand, I think. Yeah, um, but, um. You know, I, I sort of hate going back over, back over well-trodden ground, but. Spending months talking about this audit letter, which has had much, much bigger effect on the general fund and, and, you know, saying, oh, we got to pay an extra two hundred thousand grand. That's no big deal. You know, I didn't see people saying, oh, my goodness, Pam, this is the camp floor. It's more to what the order says. You have that amount of millions of dollars in that general fund. So I think it's a little bit inconsistent to. You know, s- say, you know, maybe a few months ago that we should have accepted a multi-million dollar impact on the general fund. Now we're getting all upset about a potential one hundred. It's, it's the same, it's the same pool of money. And it's worth fighting, and I, I think it is worth fighting for, but I think it's inconsistent about that. Some of that consists of that. And maybe no one's doing attention, but I know it's all complicated. Yeah, yeah, Matty, you had some.
Yeah, I mean, I think my, um, you know, my priorities are trying to preserve, um, our long-term staff. Uh, also our department's like long-term stability. So, I mean, I do feel like we have, um, operated using restricted funds. And grants, and that's been a successful model for us. I think, you know, I want to do everything I can to maybe avoid going into the general fund. Because I think our department, we've really benefited from being able to make these multi-year long-term plans, and we've been able to do that with these multi-year grants and things. So. You know, when I look to the budget, I definitely will be thinking about, um, you know, some of it is a little bit like scrambling at the last minute to prepare for next year. Um, but also thinking ahead of like, well, what's our model moving forward? And then how can we, uh, operate within available funding goals?
Yeah, I think, I think this department has, uh, been under the microscope more than any. And I think that they have, uh. Hard data to back up a lot of the decisions that go into it. Um, I think that this is important for catching up to. All the growth. Um, I think there was a lot of, I know that there was a lot of really rapid growth and. Didn't really plan for sustainability or, or, um, you know, how we could handle increased tourism. And, uh, I was bringing it up earlier, but I, I am really proud that this department. Relies on zero dollars from the general fund. And so there's no property tax going towards this at all. And if we want to keep it that way, I'm perfectly in favor of, you know, redistributing other, um. Rec film and. Fuck dollars from elsewhere to make this happen. I feel like this does have hard data that, that backs it up more than. A lot of the other recipients of that. I think that there are other departments that are getting increases that are funded through the general fund. So. I'm also happy trimming some of those and putting dollars this way, but, um. You know, as a takeaway, I would say that, uh, you know, continued cuts are appreciated, but I recognize that it's already been a cut from last year's budget. And, um. I'm, I'm happy to go to bat for this department and. You know, we could redirect other funds from elsewhere funded if we don't want to put general fund money towards it.
Bill?
I want to go back to some of Mr. Walker's comments in previous meetings. The general fund and T R T money is the same thing. If you want to talk consistency, then let's talk consistency, because regardless, you're taking money. From the general fund here, and it has nothing to do with the state auditor's letter. It has to do with the bottom line. The fact that the economy is not. Where it should be in this county. It's, it's consistency, I think, is great. And I think that if anybody's consistent here. You'll find that I am consistently advocating that we look at our economy and that we make our choices for all departments, not any one. Based off of what we have coming in in the foreseeable future. That's the consistency that I would like all of us under.
Um, there's different kinds of T R T money. It's T R T, it's mitigation money that's equivalent to the general fund. But this is T R T establishment, from what we're talking about. So. No, no contradiction there, no lack of consistency. Um. I, I, I'm hoping we can just. About the sound, I mean, I think it's, it's, I've heard three people say they're okay.
Yep.
As a sort of, you know, bridge measure, spending some general money there. You're listening to this conversation. I wouldn't count on general fund money in twenty twenty-six. Yeah, I think, but then you'll have time to prepare for that and make sure that, you know, your plans are following here. Um, or using other, other sources. That, that, that seems great to me, you know, to support that. Um, Evan proposed instead, we, so if you see general fund, we could just make cuts to other things that we spend. Very much, which would be, you know, assuming as a record, we're spinning on films. I, I, again, because of the last minute. Age, you know, I think long-term is good to look at those priorities. I think we get used to sending X percent of this place, and we just do the same thing year after year. But I don't want to do that in the last minute, so that's why I would rather, um, allocate you up to. Say a hundred thousand dollars to this and construct them to other grant funding so that maybe we don't have to spend that. Um, and, and then, and next year, I'm sorry, won't be coming. Um, and, and we have the rest. Yeah, I, I would, I'd agree with that personally. Um, and I do think it's time, about time to wrap it up. I think we were, we were looking at a one o'clock. Uh, deadline to get back into it. Um, I think, yeah, Gabe hasn't been here for the last twenty minutes, and he can, he can take this conversation as, uh. Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
All right, Patty, please, uh, we can hold on, uh, get the information back to me. To help my decision, if you can.
About numbers or about the audit stuff?
Same as Gabe. Uh, if that funding can come from a different area of the general fund, uh, let me know.
I, I think that's definitely the, the goal.
Yeah, I, I, I know it's the goal, but I, I need to know.
Yeah. And, I mean, I'm going to rely on Gabe to kind of provide that information on the audit, just because I haven't been inclined to be, I don't want.
We have a meeting Monday. I expect you to have to go over your department too, so.
Cool. Um, for Monday, so, you know, I'm planning on coming up with. Yeah, a ladder of options or, or just the option I think is best, but if you guys do have opinions about, like, those specific line items, um. Just shoot me an email or let me know, because, uh, that will be helpful for me in the planning process.
I agree with your priorities that you all want to.
People? Looks like, uh, okay. Um. I, yeah, I, I think we'll continue on Monday, the, the whole budget hearing. Get back to it, um. Yes, so, yeah, that's right. Yeah, okay.
It is because we pushed deliberations back further because I have a trial that.
Okay, yeah, that's right, that's right. Okay, thanks, Matty.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I'd entertain a motion to go back into closed session. Our process of liberation. Um, determination.
All right, Mike, second it. So motion by Kevin, second by Mike, all in favor of the motion, raise your hands, and the motion passes unanimously.
Brian, you'll be including a couple, like, beer cans.